Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council in regular session on Monday, October 2nd, 2017, and ask our city recorder to please call the roll. Counselor Ryan?
Here.
Counselor Freeman?
Here.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counselor President Parsons?
Here.
Counselor Herrera?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Here.
And Youth Counselor Hernandez?
Here.
Let's have everybody back. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we get into the regular agenda, I would like to, on behalf of the people in the council of Kaiser, extend our deepest sympathies, our condolences, and our heartfelt thoughts and prayers to all the people in Las Vegas who have been affected by the horrific events of last evening. We will do everything we can as a community to help out as we can, and we know that we cannot stop people from being hateful and horrible, but we can make a difference here. And we hope that what we do here and what we do as a nation can bring good even in the face of absolutely horrific evil. So I just want to express those sentiments and hope that today, moving forward, we can be a community that continues to live by the tenets of peace and of caring for one another. Is there anybody else who would like to add anything? Okay. Thank you. We have no special orders of business tonight and committee reports. I don't have anybody here from a committee or commission unless I missed a blue sheet. So that will take us then to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. We have one public hearing tonight, and that is the reopened public hearing on the ordinance amending the Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 2.309, Site and Landscaping Design. So I have one person signed up for public testimony, and that is Mr. Bob DeVore. Come on down. Thank you for joining us. And if you -- just start with your name and your city of residence.
I'm Bob DeVore. I'm a resident of the city of Kaiser. And I noticed I have a limited amount of time, so I'm just gonna try and stick to the script here. I'm appearing here this evening about Resolution R. 2017-2788, establishing the city of Kaiser Park Services fee, and Resolution R. 2017-2787, establishing the city of Kaiser Police Services fee. First of all, I'm 100% in agreement with the fees. I don't have a problem. I need the police, and I enjoy the parks with myself, my children, and grandchildren. But I am interested in having you reconsider the age currently listed for a senior reduced rate. In inquiring about the senior age several months ago, after I heard there was going to be a senior age, I was told that the council was interested in a senior reduced age based on an age for those that would reasonably not utilize the park system as much. Seventy-five years of age was proposed and approved. I think using diminished age ability to use the parks at seventy-five years of age is flawed way of establishing a senior discount. The age of seventy-five is also being used in Resolution 2017-2787, establishing the city of Kaiser Police Services fees. And it just doesn't make sense. Does this mean that those at seventy-five plus would reasonably not utilize the police as much? No matter what age I am, I still have the desire to have good police protection, and I plan to continue to bring my grandchildren and great-grandchildren to the parks to enjoy. I'm a senior. I have only found one reference on the Internet that the age of seventy-five is used for a senior reduced rate. You can ski free at seventy-five at Mount Hood Meadows. I hope I make it. I thought senior rates and discounts were offered to seniors because they often are living on a fixed income at a reduced rate of income. I've been retired now for two and a half years. I'm 70 years old. I'm inquiring with my savings, my 401Ks and stuff, about 48% of what I earned two and a half years ago. So I'm really sensitive about increase in cost of living. I lost my place. I just finished reading an article, the Department of Human Services in spring of 2014, that the median age of a person passing in Marion County is 75.9 years of age. Now, I'm hoping to beat that by a long run. Seniors are living longer on a fixed income, which means that their ability to pay always increasing on new bills like park and police fees become more of a challenge because they're living longer and their salary's not going up, but all the fees are. Age and income are important health factors when it comes to anyone when you are a senior dealing with increased rates. It's a challenge. Sixty-two and sixty-five are recognized for seniors by the federal government and the state of Oregon. I have a list here, too. I'm gonna read real quick, and I've got extras for you to review. In neighboring communities, Silverton, Oregon recognizes a senior at 60 years old, and it gives a 25% discount. Dallas, Oregon recognizes a senior at 60-plus, an 18% discount. Salem, Oregon, our neighbor, offers a discount for wastewater portion of utilities at the age of 62, which is a 15.5%. And our chariot transportation system offers a 50% discount at the age of 60. And I'll leave these here for you to review. That's -- I understand that the senior -- reducing the senior age would reduce the projected review of the city we'll be receiving, but using the age of 75 years of age is very hard to understand when other surrounding local cities recognize that a senior on a reduced fixed income starts at 60. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. DeVore? So one of the things we're looking at with the fee and the administration of it will be what the requests are for reductions. We are very aware, and we already have in place discounts for people who have difficulty with income, you know, I'm looking for the right words, but lower income. So we already have that in place because we are very, very aware that we did not want to put people on fixed or limited incomes into a hard place with the fee, with both fees. So we do have that in place. And then we were gonna watch for requests for the reductions and then track that. We have the ability, since both of these are in resolution, if we find that it is disproportionate or it is causing more difficulty for people who are on -- who are seniors on fixed incomes, then that is something that the council, when we do our annual review of this fee, will be able to take up. So this is not set in stone forever, but it is an opportunity for us to be able to review. And I appreciate your concern for people who are on limited incomes. We have so many people in our community that are in that situation. We want to make sure we're very aware of and respond appropriately. Yes?
Would you like these?
Yes, I'm sorry. Counselor Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Herrer. I guess just a question for Chris, first of all. How did we get the 75 in the first place? And when staff put that together, did they not come up with the figures of other cities like a gentleman?
I'm gonna let Tim take it because he did most of the research, so.
Okay. Madam Mayor, City Council, when we put this together, we got demographic information from the Mid-Valley Council of Governments, and they basically parsed it out in five-year increments. So that was the beginning basis. So we originally started with, you know, possibly a complete exclusion at 75 or some other level. We picked the 75 range. I guess I need to step back. They went from 65 to 75. So we kind of had that 10-year break there. So, or 85. So we had those 65, 75, 85, and we chose the middle of the demographics. In regards to other cities, very few other cities offer discounts off of fees such as this. When it's a fee-for-service type of situation, you know, chariots, those kind of things, yeah, there is. When it's a direct correlation between, you know, I'm gonna buy a ticket for something, I'm gonna go to the Parks and Rec Department and go swimming, there's a lot of discounts like that. But we really -- I couldn't find a lot of discounts that pertained exactly to this type of a situation where it's being applied to every household in the city. So that's kind of the basics of how that age got picked.
The other fact we looked at, you know, I agree with you. I think at 75, your need for public safety doesn't decrease. In fact, in a lot of ways, it may increase. But I think that there is a legitimate argument that at a certain age, people utilize parks less because they're not gonna be able to. And we internally did discuss that matter a fair amount of what is that age? Is it 65? Because we actually did the numbers for 65. We thought that might be a legitimate break. Ultimately, people are living longer. They're maintaining health longer, and we determined that 75 really is sort of that age where people's ability to fully utilize the services may begin to decline. For some people, like yourself perhaps, that may not be the case. You may be very active past that. But I think it's a more difficult argument to say that at 65, somebody's ability to fully utilize the park system is diminished, just because of how long we're keeping our health and how active our seniors are these days versus in the past. So that was my thought in relation to that.
Thank you. One other part to that was if people are moving into assisted or multifamily residences at a certain age, those are at a reduced rate. We did a lower cost per unit, averaging out the average vacancy. So we wouldn't have to do a calculation for every single apartment complex. That seemed like it was gonna be very nitpicky. So based on some good broad-based data, a slightly lower rate was calculated for that. So it wouldn't impact the multifamily quite as heavily. So that was also went into some of the thoughts as well. Did we also do one for senior, senior residences?
We did.
That's what I thought, yeah. Senior living is also lower.
So but the mayor's point is absolutely correct. This was adopted by resolution for the specific ability to modify it because we're starting something new here. This is our first shot at this, and our intent was to review. In fact, we're required to provide a statistical review of how it's going, how much revenue we collected, what did we do with the money to the Budget Committee at the budget process. And then they have a lot of flexibility and latitude as to what to do with that, so.
Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also, we talked, we did obviously talk about this at length, but what I wanted to reiterate, too, that really stuck with me was the quality of living for the neighborhoods in all ages, including the home values. We looked at that. We thought everybody benefited from better home values and increased property value when we have really nice parks and really safe streets. So that was a factor as well. We didn't really necessarily pick a number. As you've heard, we were trying to get averages and make sure everybody benefited, so.
I think it was unique, if I may just make a comment.
Please.
I think it was unique, the way you approached the use thing. And then I thought it was just absolutely, I'm trying to be polite here, ridiculous that you applied that to a police discount for seniors. I mean, I think in my discussion, by the way, I had nothing but help by, from Tim and Communications and other people and staff were very, very friendly in helping me. But I don't think Tim could find anything based upon usage. He did make a comment about flat usage. But the city of Salem does offer that discount, too, for 62-year-olds for the wastewater treatment. I appreciate your time in listening to me. I'm glad you're gonna continue to review that. I moved here to retire. I have a house. I like it. Chariots fell all apart because I was planning to use a good transportation system to get around. But I do like the city of Kaiser. I enjoy living here. I like to participate in community projects, too. Thank you.
In just one last little tiny bit, but in relation to applying the discount to both fees, was purely an attempt to try to reduce the impact on fixed income folks?
I appreciate that.
That really was, that really was. There isn't a logical reason to reduce it for police, but there's a compassion reason.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. I'm blessed. I have a substantial retirement income, but I think of the others that don't.
So that'll be something I know that we will be receiving reports on as we approach the review. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
I saw a blue sheet come up. Oh, yeah.
We have to change the schedule?
None of that. Okay. So Rick Day, and is this regarding the public hearing or something other than that?
I think, Madam Mayor, it's kind of a general rant that has to do with several things that are going on.
Okay, then.
General rant.
Yes.
General rant, all right.
Sign code, landscape code, stormwater tax.
No, just, huh? If it has to do with the public hearing portion, that will have to wait till that portion. But if you want to speak to other issues, please, we would love to hear what you have to say.
Very well. Thank you.
So just your name and city of residence, please.
Yes. My name is Rick Day. I'm a resident in Marion County. I've operated a business here for 22 years in, on Candlewood Drive here in Kaiser, which is what gets me here. I love the community and thank all you folks for your service here. I love the community and been a part of the community. I recently sold my company to an international in mid-July. I am still operating a couple of other companies here, and I employ some people. My main business that I sold recently, I'm staying on with them for a period of time, and we run 30 to 50 folks. The company that bought us is a large international. And I want to bring this up, I guess, just for the council to ponder, I guess. Madam Mayor, you and I were on a committee that I believe you formed, that there was a business, a pro-business or a, I don't know if I'd say pro-business, but a business committee that was to, Economic Development Committee, pardon me, and to try and see what we could do to vitalize that. And I don't know if everybody's aware. I know a lot of the people in the community aren't. For instance, I've been paying a stormwater tax down there that kind of just popped up when Mr. Kissler was the Public Works Manager. And his comment to me was, we just gotta all pay our fair share, even though my property shed no stormwater. Matter of fact, we helped build the public-private system and donated it. But that's around $10,000, $15,000 a year added onto my water bill. And then lately, I've been hearing about, of course, landscape tax, businesses who, you know, have signs in their windows that we're gonna try and regulate that, restrictive sign codes, and telling businesses what to put in their windows because of how we might feel about that. And I guess a couple of comments. One is, is that as a small businessperson in this community and being attached to this community, there's love involved, okay? I would pretty much tell you this big international, I may not be with them in the morning, but this big international probably doesn't share that love, right? They are looking at the bottom line. And for instance, I'd like to build more buildings down there. I'd like to put more asphalt down there. I'd like to make a better facility, a more productive facility. We're what's normally called a traded sector company, and we sell into Alaska, Hawaii, California, Washington, Idaho, and we bring that money back here. And we provide the jobs here. And there's a value with that. But is this international company, are they gonna invest the money and put down more asphalt and more buildings? Because if I'm paying $10,000, $15,000 now, what am I gonna be paying when I'm only using maybe 12%, 15% of the property as non-permeable space, right? Or is, yeah, non-permeable buildings and asphalt, right? So that disincentivizes this company to develop here and add jobs here and to stay here. And then I start hearing lately, just, you know, things here and there about the potential for the landscape taxes and then the restrictive sign codes, furtherly restrictive sign codes. We already have a fairly restrictive sign code here. And it just kind of flies in the face of not only proactively trying to get business to come here, but to expand here, to stay here. And then the sign code thing just generally ticks me off because there comes a time when y'all should go home and have a barbecue and not legislate or regulate anything else, that you leave it alone. Sometimes there's overregulation and overlegislation. So I just encourage you to take it easy with the rulemaking and keep in mind, these things pile up. The state has done eight, 10 things the session before and more this last session, and you pile that up and you pile that up, and it becomes a very unattractive place to do business. My competitors north of the border have a 10% advantage over me just in the taxes and what the state legislature has done. Pretty soon, we won't be here anymore. So just something to think about. So thank you for your time and your patience with me.
Always, always for you. Questions for Mr. Day? Thank you so much for coming and sharing your thoughts. And just because we don't have any questions doesn't mean we weren't listening very carefully.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Anybody else who would like to address the council during public testimony, just not on the issues of the public hearing? Come on down.
My name's Darrell Richardson. I live on Rivercrest Drive. I've been a resident of Kaiser for, oh, going on 50 years now. Besides that, I guess I never knew about the 75-year discount on parks and the police department. Is there something going on that I fell asleep or something that I didn't hear about? And I don't look at the water bill, so I, the wife pays that. She hasn't said anything, so I just wondered if there's something of a discount for that.
This is for the incoming fees, the ones that begin next month, the new parks fee and the new police fee. People can apply for getting a reduction due to age or income need. So we do have a process here in the city for people who need that. But this is not something that you've been paying up until now. This goes into effect next month.
Okay. I'm over 75. So do I have to?
Oh, really?
Yes. So do I have to bring my birth certificate down to say, okay, I'm over 75 to get a discount? Okay.
You can just come to the front counter at the utility billing section, and we'll take care of you.
Okay.
You don't need any special documents, although your driver's license would be helpful.
I had like seven pieces of identification.
That's right. No, in all seriousness, it's very straight, very easy. You know, we want people who feel that they do need to ask. Many times, they're reluctant to do so because it's maybe embarrassing, or they just don't know how people are going to look at them. And we try to make it as easy as possible.
On a more serious note, you can go to our website, and the forums to apply for the senior discount or the low-income discount are there as well. Feel free to also call into the utility billing section, and we can take care of you that way. Or if you just want to stop by, any of those options, and we'll be able to make it happen.
Well, this is great. You know, you wait until you're 16, get driver's license, 21 to drink, and 50 to become a senior. Now, 75. This is, you know, getting better every year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for all the help that you provide for our parks and the community.
You're very welcome.
Anybody else would like to address the council during public testimony? All right. Let's go on then to the public hearing we have on the agenda tonight. This is an ordinance amending the Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 2.309, Site and Landscaping Design, amending ordinance number 98-389. And the public, let's see, I have to reopen the public hearing? Okay, so I'm gonna reopen the public hearing. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brown?
So at the September, your last meeting on September 18th, the council has directed that this public hearing be reopened after taking public testimony. You had previously approved the proposed amendment. However, this then was decided to reopen this public hearing for additional testimony. Because that testimony was directed specifically about the 1% issue in the landscape chapter, we have put together a table of different options that the council may choose to examine. And on your dais, and I will talk about it, is a little bit of an expansion of that table. So there are some, an additional four options that the council may wish to choose. And of course, this is not intended to be exhaustive or limiting in any way. This was just, as in our conversation with the community, with developers, with members of the chamber, these were the, some of the issues that were discussed. So as you know, and just as a brief reminder how we got here, the landscaping section of the development code is, was basically pretty woefully inadequate. It did not cover some of the situations that we were encountering. And some of the basic standards that we have in the development code regarding landscaping were simply not applicable in some of our major development projects. So we, as part of our normal course and trying to keep the development code up to date, we reopened that and examined all the issues in that development code. Now, I have heard from most of you, from members of the community, from members of the chamber, that we have to do something about upgrading River Road in particular, and Cherry, of course. The intent is that River Road, as in most cities that have been around for a while, it has been subject to a lot of different pressures and a lot of different changes over the decades. When River Road was widened, for example, there was a big chunk that was taken off of a lot of our businesses. That leaves us with kind of a stressed business environment. It leaves us with less than desirable. As you know, with the River Road Renaissance Program and the Urban Renewal District and the funds that were provided there, we established a lot of great improvements. And I have, other than the classic international incident with the bollards and the shape of the bollards, it has been, it has been met with a lot of positive and pretty universal acclaim that we have made some very good improvements along River Road. But those tools have gone away. We no longer have an urban renewal district. We no longer have any tools that will give the development process to upgrade the level of the standard of the kind of development that we see on River Road. And so in an effort to try and create a minor or a modest amount of raising the bar and creating, creating a little bit higher standard as to what kind of businesses are going to locate in our community, we established a proposal and went through Planning Commission. In fact, there were two meetings at the Planning Commission that discussed this issue. It came to you for your first public hearing. And that proposal has gained traction, and we know that it is a challenge. We know that it does affect people. We know that this is, this represents an impact to the kinds of development that will take place on River Road. But I would submit to you, if we want to change, somebody is going to be impacted. And it's not going to change just because it would be a nice thing to do. So we proposed, and it was, the inspiration came from other programs, particularly the 1% for art program that many of you have heard about that are, that's applied in different situations. This is not a 1% for art program. So there's been a few different misconceptions out there about what it is. One is that this is a fee that we would assess, that we would be taxing an individual by this amount. Now, we understand where that comes from. And second one is that this would affect housing prices because of the original proposal for multifamily. Number three, this would affect small businesses along River Road more than the businesses at Kaiser Station. And four, this would be under the control of the city. at Kaiser Station. And four, this would be under the control of the city. So, I've tried to identify why these, these are, these misconceptions are not accurate. First of all, it is not a fee. It's simply a requirement that as you develop and as you redevelop along, in our commercial districts, that 1%, that's one, one hundredth of your project, would be oriented to providing amenities for the community. We don't, we don't collect it. We don't, the only thing that we do is ensure accountability that in your development proposal, then you show us how you are providing a minimal level of public orientation. For example, a 10,000 project would have the option, the requirement that would be $100 of that project would be oriented to the public. Now, whether that would be in providing a specimen tree, a larger tree, or some other thing. Now, $100 is pretty minimal. So, as it went through planning commission, the planning commission suggested that we have, we have the public art program that is alive and well in this city. And it would be easier, and it was actually suggested by Kyle Duran on our planning commission, that as an option, we could then utilize that public art as a way for small projects or projects that couldn't establish something specific, could simply pay into that fund, and that would, that would be their obligation. Second, second is that housing prices would be affected. You, at, in your direction to prepare the ordinance, specifically exempted multifamily. So, there'd be no housing that would be, that would be directly affected. It is conceivable that, that a multi-use project, maybe, but honestly, we have not seen that, that has not been a development type that we have seen on River Road. The, the perception that we would be treating different businesses differently, the current proposal is basically all businesses are, are treated equally. And then the fourth one is businesses that the city would be in control, and that's, part of the proposal is that there'd be a lot of flexibility given, that businesses would have complete control as to what kind of improvement, how they wanted to orient that. They could, they could make a wide range of different proposals. So, it is intended that businesses would have complete control on how that obligation was met. So, again, after last meeting, we created this table of different options. And I, I will just try to briefly go through the different options. You always have the choice, of course, to either approve it or simply deny it. It is under your, it's completely your decision. You have the option to simply reduce the amount. If 1% is too much, you could, you could simply reduce it. You could create a stepped rate based on valuation, and whether you wanted to favor smaller businesses over larger businesses, or give larger businesses that have a bigger price tag a break, you could establish that. Whether it would be, and I just threw some numbers there on the sheet, but you could establish a stepped rate. You could simply place a maximum cap if you are concerned, as you heard testimony in the last meeting, that if there's an $8 million project, that would be an $80,000 price tag. You, you could choose to simply put an ultimate cap on that. And incidentally, I have identified here, if you chose one of these options, I've, I've given you suggestions as to what that language may be that you could insert. You could, you could exclude small projects. If the concern is that small businesses would, would be more adversely impacted than a multinational corporation, you could establish a small, a small project cap. Then you have the other options. You could simply eliminate the 1% and, and direct staff to repair stronger development standards. There's a, and that has a lot of appeal. However, I, I'm just going to put out on the table, it's going to be very difficult to create a standard that applies in all of our different situations along River Road. That would be responding to what we see on one section versus another section. For example, one business, it may be completely appropriate to try and screen the parking. But if we wrote that into the development standards, when somebody in another situation who has very little parking and no space to, to give to such a thing, I couldn't just say, well, you've got to screen your parking. And so, the concern is that there is a wide range of different applications and different development types. And if it is written into the development standards, that will be as written. So, it will reduce flexibility and our ability as, as a city who has tried very hard to be responsive to the different developments and the different situations that we see. So, I just throw that out there. We could, again, create a different kind of a structure by creating different overlay zones, that we could target certain areas, and we could say, within this area, and we have that, as you've dealt with recently on the Safeway project, we have that overlay district. We could create various overlay districts that businesses within that would have perhaps a development standard that would apply to that district. There is a pattern that is established there with the River Road Renaissance. The five districts of that River Road Renaissance plan tried to create different design vernaculars for those five areas. We could develop some way to create different incentives, to provide a structure to, to incentivize being able to create a higher level of development. And certainly, that would be much more attractive. The problem with that is, I'm not sure, absent any resources or absent anything to give to them, we can't adjust their system development charges. Those are established and governed by statute. We don't have urban renewal anymore. We, that, so, we have very limited ability, and council would have to establish some other way to provide that incentive. And I have no suggestions on how you might do that. We did discuss, for example, would, would we establish an, an additional urban renewal district, a new one? That, however, as you know, is a very extensive process and something that would be a project all in of itself. And then, so those you had in your packet, and then what you didn't have in your packet is, as we continue to think about it and try to examine it, we could establish a valuation cap to even out the disparity between expensive construction, as, again, we heard testimony last time, and Alan is here to provide additional testimony. You could choose to, to simply cap a rate above a certain amount. For example, if you wanted to cap the, the cost per square foot at seven, at 70 cents per square foot, which would be, and this, and Alan, I think, will be able to explain more of this. This was actually his suggestion. So, typically, what you'll see is, is construction costs will range anywhere from 70 up to 100 and whatever per, per square foot. Whereas, if somebody were building a warehouse, they would be, under the current proposal, it would just simply be, you know, 1% for the minimal cost of that construction compared to the more expensive cost of an office building. So, you could establish up to a cap of, for example, 70 cents per, per square foot. The other suggestion is, we could exempt Kaiser Station. The thought being that Kaiser Station has a lot of public amenities that we required as part of that master plan overlay. Of course, the con there is your equity issues. And the perception, though we know what perceptions are not always accurate, but the perception would be that you would be favoring Kaiser Station over River Road businesses. And then, the other one was that we would actually marry the 1% of cost of compliance to other regulations. For example, if you had to bring your parking lot up to speed because it was, did not meet our standards, then you could perhaps credit that against their 1%. The difficulty there is, it would imply that you're, you're ranking your standards at a different value, that one would be more important than the other standard, and it would also, also introduce subjectivity. Where do you, how do you draw the line and what standards do you throw into that? Do we throw in stormwater? Do we throw in many of these other things? So, that is, and then the last one, thank you. The last one would be that perhaps council could establish an exemption based on some adopted criteria that you could establish based on goals, that the kinds of businesses you want, you wanted to attract or make more favorable. That, however, would require the development of some very specific criteria and goals, and that would be, of course, something that would be another process. So, for many of these, what we would ask you to do, if you chose one of these options, would be to simply delete the 1% and direct staff to develop something else and move forward that way. If you wanted to do some of these others in the earlier suggestions, there is some suggested language there about how you would proceed to do that. So, Bannon has his finger on the button. I'm not sure what that means, but, so, I don't, if you have any more questions, I'd be happy to answer that. Again, these are simply intended to give you options as to how you may wish to proceed.
So, I'm going to go to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. In, in my role as city attorney, I don't comment on policy issues. I try to leave my comments to questions involving legal questions. So, I don't, I don't weigh in. Chris and Nate make more policy recommendations, and I try to stay away from that because I don't want the council to consider any policy questions I have might, might flavor any legal opinions I might have. So, I don't have any specific policy recommendations specifically, but I will caution council on two items. One, and Nate's pointed that out in several of these options, is, is either the equity or perception of equity issues on some of these options. But the other one is, and it's, it's always easy to say, but sometimes hard to do, it's, it's always easier to keep things simple. So, some of the options that, that may require a little bit more complexity, if that's the option you want, and, and for good reason, then that overcomes the fact that maybe it's not so simple. That's fine. But we, you know, the staff does have to administer it, and the public has to understand it. So, those are the only comments that I, that I wanted to add at the beginning, Madam Mayor.
All right. And what I'd like to do with our questions for staff on this additional material is questions specific to some of these options. We're going to debate later, so I don't want to get into the weeds. So, if we can do clarifying questions at this point, the reason is that we would have more time for the people here who are testifying, and then we can get into an actual motion and debate. So, are we good with that? Okay. So, I'll start with Council Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, a point of clarification on two points. Nate, just because I'm, I'm a little bit confused by your definition. So, number one, which was that the fee is, it's not a fee, not assessed by the city or collected by the city. And number four, which I'm combining together, this would be, this would not be under the control of the city. So, if people chose the option to do, to do the fee instead of the upgrades, then the city's not collecting it, and the, we have no, we have no accountability in
Yes.
in, in taking that money from them?
No, we would, but that would be their choice. We're not assessing it of them. It's their voluntary
They choose that option.
They choose that option.
Then, of course, the city collects it, and the city
Sure. And then the city would
buys accountability.
Right. And then the city would have to expend that money through the budget process, through the, the Kaiser Public Arts Commission would have that, the responsibility to administer that fund.
Okay. And that was my clarification, because you sounded like the opposite. So, thank you.
Councila Ferrera?
Okay. I'm waiting to hear from the, the business owners, and I did talk to a couple, but I myself, excuse me, want to keep it extremely simple and just drop it. And that's, I've talked to some people, and I really think that it's not the right time, and it's, it needs some more work or more, more down the road looking at another, other options. I don't, I'm not sure that any of these options are, I'm real clear on some. They seem too complicated.
Councila Ferrera?
Too much to do. Yes, ma'am?
So, we will, so we're doing clarifying questions now, and then when we get to the debate, we'd love to continue the, the conversation on, on what options we're going to do.
Sure.
I don't want to stop you, but I
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that, like you, we want to hear what the audience members have to say as well. So, this is time for clarifying questions on the materials we've been given, and then we will debate. Council Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I wanted to ask, ask not something about the material, but just in your, your summary. What problem, can you please explain, expand on what problems you were encountering? Because I, I heard that when I was last, my apologies for not being here at the last meeting on the 18th, but the one prior to that, I heard a real similar summary, and I didn't, failed to ask, what are the problems that we've been encountering? That kind of led up to this.
Okay. Is it the threshold question as to?
Actually, in, in, you know, I think what you're getting at is, what you have to ask yourself is, are you happy with, with the business environment on River Road? If you are, if you believe that it's adequate or provides enough amenity for the shopping public and, and the customers, and provides an appropriate business atmosphere for high-quality business, then I think you're, you, you may wish to not impose this. If, however, you would like to see River Road be improved, then there has to be a way to get there.
That's not my question.
Let me, let me take a stab at, at your question.
I'm wanting to know, I've heard, I heard Nate say this before. I would like to know what were the problems that you, your department has been encountering as you've received development proposals or permit applications?
Well, I, I tried to explain at the last meeting, for example, we had the major remodel that's now ongoing. We
At Wincor.
At Wincor, at Ware Mart, by Wincor. We pled with them to give something to the community, to give an upgrade to the, the kinds of things that they were giving. And their response, of course, was what is required, and if it's not required, then we have, we have our mandate. And so, we got, we got nothing by the way of any kind of amenity for the community. Now, there are some amenities up there, but those are amenities that the city has worked and has, has installed on their own. The biggest problem that we see is the kind of development that we have along the, the established area of River Road over the years becomes dilapidated. It becomes not well-maintained. I can give you specifics examples. I'd rather not embarrass businesses, but specifically landscaped areas is one thing that we see woefully lacking on River Road. And if they come in for a simple tenant improvement, upgrade, I have, I have nothing in the development code that I can say, you know that, that, that really ugly landscaping that you have out there? I have nothing right now in the development code that would give me the ability to ask them to upgrade or to give something back to the community.
Okay, okay. So, related to So related to the, yes, thank you, so related to the proposal that we've got here then, if we are upgrading landscaping, trees, shrubbery, that sort of thing, would that give you the tools that you need?
Well, the proposal and the 1% is an idea to try to do some of the things we were doing in River Road Renaissance, by establishing site furnishings, by establishing small areas that you can step off of the sidewalk, by establishing something, some visual amenity that may be a water feature, or something of that nature. Now, again, these, these very small projects, that's not going to give us much, but at least it would generate a little bit of resource for the public art if they chose to do that. And those things are what we're talking about. We're not just talking about some junipers in front of a building, we're talking about try to create an environment in our community that, that we work hard for. This community is, is exceptional in its unity, and in its volunteerism, and the amount of time and effort that, that we have on many of our civic organizations. You know, Men of Action, they, they go out on their own, and they, they work with these businesses. Those kinds of things are what we, what we draw together as a community. We have this as a community. This is an opportunity, as we develop this section, to say, you know what, let's raise the bar just a little bit in our community. So that was the intent, and that was the desire.
Okay. Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a question for Mr. Johnson, and I, this is a basic question, and I almost had to say to ask it, but I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on the legal definition of equity in this context. So I know that's kinda putting you on the spot for this, but just because, you know, we've talked about, you know, reductions for the police fee, for the parks fee, and so forth, and those were done to be equitable, but in one sense, it's not the same for everybody. So I just kinda wanted to have a clear understanding of equity in this context, and where we might be getting into some legal trouble if we infringe on that concept.
Well, the term equity is usually synonymous with fairness, and fairness is a very subjective kind of idea. You'll, you'll notice that Nate talks about it in the staff report, I would hope it's not in the text. I would not like to see the word equity in most ordinances in terms of specific requirements, because that's just a subjective call. There, what, what's equitable is up to the council, it's a policy question on what's fair or not. I mean, it's always, you know, if you're the person paying it, it's never fair, I suppose, or some people would, would think that way. And you can see why the business community would be concerned about that. But that's not so much a legal question, actually, unless you want me to try to get a textbook definition of what equity is. That's just a question of fairness for council to determine.
Okay, thank you. That's basically what I was wondering, just kinda wanted to make sure that I understood that as, as it was, so, thank you.
All right. Are there any other clarifying questions before we call up the folks who have signed up to testify? All right. So first on the list, you probably know the order you signed up in. Oh, before we call people down, I would like to let people know that we also received written communication from Darren Block, who is the landlord of Schoolhouse Square, and sent an email regarding the, the topic this evening. And I can read in the record, but this will be included in the record that is posted online, and we've all had a chance to read it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If you'd like me to try and summarize it, just for the audience?
Yes, that would be helpful.
So as, as you mentioned, Darren Block, we had actually a very long conversation on Friday, and I encouraged him to make his concerns known and provide you with his concerns. Basically, he's identified four different specific kinds of concerns. One is that the wrong party would foot the bill. Most of what we see would be tenant improvement kind of work, and they would be the ones taking out the permits, and therefore, they would be the ones obligated to demonstrate providing that, that public amenity. Assessing the 1% fee would be unfair, because the city's requiring the tenant to make a capital improvement for the landlord. Of course, he's also saying that it's anti-business, that it would be, and he prefers to use the term tax, because it ultimately boils down to dollars and cents. Adding a tax would discourage businesses from locating, because it's just one more So he's working with a prospective tenant, and is trying to negotiate with them, and is concerned that one more obstacle is going to make him less competitive. He feels that it's arbitrary, can't see the logic in requiring an exterior improvement for an interior finish. And existing conditions, all real estate is different, the code should take the existing conditions of the landscape into, into consideration, and so, of course, he just upgraded the landscaping in front of the, the new, the new construction, and so he wanted that taken into consideration.
So those are four basic points, and this will be included in the written record as well. Council Ryan?
I think it's important to note that one of his statements stated that, and trying to, you know, bring in this new tenant, and to make Kaiser, you know, attractive to him, that this 1% tax would be about a $25,000 fee to this $2.5 million renovation for the, for that location, and that he feels that the tenant won't choose Kaiser if they have to pay it. So I think that's important to note, the letter states that.
All right. Okay, so the first person signed up is Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We have to stop meeting like this, but anyway, we appreciate you taking the time tonight to revisit this, and we also, on behalf, my name is, for the record, my name is Jonathan Thompson. I'm the, I'm a board member for the Kaiser Chamber, and also the Chair of the Government Affairs Committee. And I would also, I would like to thank all of you for taking the time over the last couple weeks. I think that, that a member of our, of our board has spoken with each and every one of you, and we really appreciate you taking the time to meet with us and hear our concerns. That's, that's a rarity in government, and we appreciate it. So, basically, I won't, I won't go into what I, everything I went through last time, but basically, what we're doing, what we're asking is, is for folks to take a step back, let's get everybody around the table, let's figure out what, what we're trying to do, and how the best way to do it would be. Many of the concerns brought up on both sides of this issue are things that, that we're concerned about as well, and we, we wanna help fix them. So we have, as the chamber, we have several community conversations as options that we can, that we'd be happy to work with, but we think if we get developers, and property managers, and employers, and, and, and small business owners around a table, we can probably solve most of these issues. I mean, Kaiser has a long history of solving issues that way, and I, and I don't think it would stop here. I just wanna leave you with one, with one thing tonight. This weekend, I was, I was at, my wife and I, small business, and I was changing a vacuum filter, which it's not kind of a vacuum that you vacuum the floor with, it's the vacuum that you vacuum things out of people's mouths with, so it gets really gross. And my mind tends to wander, thank goodness, but I was making a list in my head of all of the taxes and fees that we pay, and we're a relatively small business, we have, we have eight employees, you know, we're, we're relatively small in the grand scheme of things, but when you add it up, it's, it's, there's a lot, there's a lot there, whether it's on the phone bill, or the cable bill for the waiting room TV, or the internet service, or the electric bill. I mean, you just keep going on, on these, and it gets, and that's before we get to things like the support that we do for things like the Iris Festival, and the Holiday Tree Lighting, and the Festival of Lights Parade, and McNary, and you just start adding all those things up, and, you know, and Nate's not wrong when he says that it's $100, but it's, it's another $100, and that's, that's where we get hung up. So, and, you know, and also in our case, we've just, we just invested almost $3,000 in improving the landscaping on our, on our little lot, and I, I got Mr. Block's email here, and I, I understand what he's saying, where he talks about the, the fact that, you know, how do we take into account the folks that are already making these improvements? Do we have to go further? Does that get taken into account? And these are all questions, I think, that if we just sit down and, and take a deep breath, I think we can answer it, and we can come up with something, 'cause, you know, let's face it, nobody, nobody doesn't want River Road to look nice. I mean, and there's parts that are great, and there are parts that need help, and we can fix it. So I just asked that everybody take a deep breath, let's sit down, let's have a conversation, and let's see if we can, let's see if we can come together and find something that we can all support. So, thank you very much, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Thompson? Thank you for coming again
Thank you very much.
sharing your thoughts, we really appreciate it. Next up, I have Mr. Rudehouse. It's good to see you.
Alan Rudehouse, McMinnville, Madam Mayor, councilors, pleasure to be here again. I have appeared before similar bodies over the last 40 years in many states, and none of them has been as enjoyable as the relationship that we've enjoyed. But I disagree with Nate. I did spend some time at the last meeting on the disparity of the cost of buildings, so I won't belabor that, only to say that the medical, dental office building that I represent, ACP One Limited, the landowner of two acres in Kaiser Station office property, would pay a fee of 1%, would be a fee of $70,000 to $80,000, which is serious money, even to a new development like that. And the reason is, is because dental office buildings very expensive, much more so than a Target or a Lowe's, or any of the other tenants out there. So the cap idea, we support if, if you end up keeping the fee, that, that makes sense to us, and we can live with that. But I wanted to bring up two other perspectives that I hope will help you appreciate the impacts. 1% doesn't sound like much. Why, why couldn't a wealthy developer, a wealthy landowner, pay another 1%? But I think you get a better feeling when you look at what percent it is of potential profit. My experience in new development has been that the most profit that you can create is 25% of the overall cost, and that's rare. And since 2008, it's much more likely to be 5% or maybe 10. And you get taxed at the state level at 10% of that profit, if you, if you sell the asset, and you get taxed in the federal level at about 25%. 1% represents 20% of a 5% profit, and 4% of a 25% profit. So in the most successful development, you would be increasing out of the, out of the owner's pocket, the taxes he pays to federal and state by 4%. You could be increasing it by 20%. So I think that gives a little perspective to what 10% of cost means. Secondly, I do wanna put in a, a strong vote in favor of exempting Kaiser Station. I do understand perceptions, the best way to deal with them, I think, is not to give in to them, is to explain the facts behind differences, because most people, when they understand that, are okay. In the case of Kaiser Station, we were before the city for a long time, 2002 to 2004, working just on the basic zoning ordinance. And in that context, as the design evolved, we were put in a position where we knew we had to do something special, and in fact, we wanted to. We wanted Kaiser Station to be the successful project that it is today. So we agreed and helped design a number of public amenities that I think people are very aware of, if they have their eyes open when they drive in and out of Kaiser Station. But the, the list is formidable. There were all new roads. A lot of businesses in town, the city roads are already there. We had to design and build a whole network of new city roads. Three very expensive bridges, a park, extend the pedestrian path for 3,000 feet along the longest dimension of the property. We also put in an expensive pump station, so the Kaiser Station Boulevard wouldn't flood during the winter. And there's some interesting history on that one. We have a large landscaping area next to the freeway that is like another park. So I think that Kaiser Station has paid its dues.
Thank you.
Got a question?
Yes, City Manager.
Mr. Rudehouse, I remember working with you on designing the scenario at Kaiser Station, and advocated for the public plazas and whatnot, and all of the amenities that are out there, to basically drive up the environment to make it a more attractive place for business, hoping that you would, it would leverage the site to be able to attract a higher-end clientele. Has that been successful or not?
Oh, it has.
It has. So the public, the public amenities were useful to business?
Absolutely.
Okay. I was just curious, because I really like the Kaiser Files.
If you remember, we didn't fight a tooth and nail by any means, but we, we
I don't know, I remember, I remember some pretty severe arguments in, in my office.
Wanna talk about the LID, and what the city gets from that?
I don't wanna talk about that, no.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I was just curious as to what your, what your thoughts as a business owner and developer were of how that, of how the environment turned out.
I think they're very important. I, I just think Kaiser Station, and even in the office area, the micro part of that, we've given already, that's, that's my
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson, you had a question?
I do.
Would you like to ask Mr. Rudehouse?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Please do.
Thanks for coming tonight, really appreciate it. Appreciate your comments, your testimony. I was also the, fortunate enough to be the Planning Commission Chair at the time that Kaiser Station came before it, and it was one of, it was a brilliant plan, and I really appreciated that after that property languished for a long, long time. The, and you really brought up some great points, and I really appreciate that, that the, the point especially on the new dental facility was, was very interesting to, to hear that one. Question I had for you regarding the, what brought y'all to put in the plaza, the, the park, the bridges, the roads? Was that sitting down with staff and working through something like that, where you could say, okay, yeah, that makes sense for us to do that, or, 'cause I, you know, obviously there wasn't anything in the development code at the time, right?
Well, we made a new development code
Okay.
the city and ourselves, just for Kaiser Station. But the real answer is, and the difference between what we were facing and what you're talking about now, is that we were there for a reason. We couldn't do anything without the city's approval and agreement. So that puts a landowner in a much weaker position to negotiate. But having said that, we, we didn't feel taken advantage of in the least, and I hope I, I hope I didn't leave that impression with you. It was, it was a good process, I think we had a good result, and I think it's been an amenity in general for Kaiser. But I, my only point was, I think we've paid.
Yep. No, I, you know, I
And if Donnie Schreiber were here, the current owner of the center, and they're almost full, but they've got a couple more spots that they can lease, they'd be saying the same thing.
No, it sounded like a very cooperative process, so I just have to say, if I don't ever hear the word jug handle again ever hear the word jug handle again in my life, I'll be happy. Thank you.
I agree with that. Are there any other questions for Mr. Rudehouse? All right. Thank you so much for being here tonight, we really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
All right. Mr. Day, come on down. All right. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to address the, the council on this issue for the public hearing? All right. Nobody else wanting to come on down and talk? So, is there any other information we need prior to closing the public hearing? I'm not hearing any and I'm not seeing a flag from our city attorney. So, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And at this point, we have a decision to make on how we want to proceed with a motion, so I'm going to ask our council president to put a motion on the floor that we can then debate and amend as we choose.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. I'm a nice big voice, I sound horrible, I'm sorry.
Trouble is so healthy.
I know. I move that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to work with the chamber and others to come up or do a work session to come up with viable options to beautify River Road and our city.
Okay. So, what, is this going to deal with the, well, we don't have a second, so, because I was looking for...
Let's second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, the Kaiser City Council direct staff, what was your language there?
Direct staff to work with the chamber and others, right, to either through a work session or whatever, to come up with viable options.
What in relation to the...
So, we need something in relation to the, the ordinance that we are, the bill for an ordinance for the entire...
Is, is this...
So, this is specific to Section E?
Yep.
Is that what you're talking about or in general?
Yes, Section E. Section E.
Okay, do you want to...
That's the one percent, right?
That is correct.
That's the one percent, yes.
Okay, so, do you want to amend your question to refer specifically to...
To refer to Section E, yes.
Section E. Okay.
So...
I think we've got the carp maybe before the horse, sir?
If I might.
Please.
Sorry. This is, if I might suggest that we move forward with the remaining, the uncontested parts, so that we can at least focus our attention on the issue that you're describing. If you move forward with that, that would be, it would be at least something to give us some definition.
Mr. Johnson?
And if the council wants to follow Nate's suggested course, since we do have a motion on the table, I'm presuming that motion is specific to the one percent issue only. You could go ahead and vote on that now, since it is on the table, but then immediately thereafter, vote to pass the ordinance, reading the title, but as amended by deleting the Section E. And then we would have an adopted ordinance for the other standards, which apparently there's no debate on those other standards. That, that was, that was Nate's main point, so that's been something that we had discussed previously.
And, and a direction to go back out and gather more information and do some more work on Section E.
Right. And since that motion's on the table now, you can certainly do that first and then, but, but I think Nate's suggestion would be so that we can move forward with the new standards to pass the ordinance as amended.
Okay. So, Councilor Anderson?
Interesting. I was going to maybe make the suggestion that, just so that we can move the process forward, omitting Section E and then going exactly the route that Councilor Parsons suggested in terms of the city sitting down and working with the chamber on that, that particular issue.
So, are you amending the motion, just to omit Section E?
Yeah, sure, yes, I would suggest that...
Would you like me to restate the motion?
Well...
Well, hang on.
You, you have a, you have a motion and a second with regard to, just a direction of council? And, and I think you can go ahead and vote on that motion now. Remember, the ordinance has to be read exactly, the title of it. And when you adopt an ordinance, it has to be, the title has to be read exactly. And so, since that's not part of this current motion, it would be better to just handle this informal direction first and then we, immediately thereafter, you can adopt the ordinance, amending it to drop that subsection.
Okay. Further discussion on, Councilor Freeman?
So, the motion is a work session, but I know the chamber asked to, or they would use one of their community forums. And I guess for me, I just want to make sure that, that we have either more flexibility with a community, you know, conversation, a work session. I just want to make sure that, I know the chamber will do their best to get all the businesses and we can promote that as well from the city and the council, but I just want to make sure we have the most flexibility and I don't know if a work session limits us to versus a community conversation. So, I just want to, I just want to, if that's a friendly amendment or just point of clarification, I guess, for me, so.
You could simply state to work with chamber and others.
And work with chamber and others, I thought I put that...
Yeah, I think that's what you said.
I said that.
Yeah. The actual motion, I don't think said...
Yeah, so that's what I heard was work session, that's why I'm...
Oh, okay. Because I know I said the chamber and others, but I didn't realize that, okay, sorry.
Right. Through a work session and friendly amendment, then through a work session and other community outreach?
Or.
Or.
Or? Or? You think that we can get this in one?
No, I don't know. I wouldn't, I wouldn't promise that. I'm just saying flexibility is all.
And/or.
I think, I think the concern from Councilor Freeman, and it's up to council to determine, is whether or not you want to require an actual council work session as part of that. And if you do, then the motion and would be sufficient. So, that, that's the issue.
So, my friendly amendment stands to and, community, community forum or similar, something similar?
I'll accept that.
Is the second accept?
The second is amended, whatever is added.
Okay. So, it's been accepted by the mover and the second to make an and, work session and community outreach or other means, other community means?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Could you, could we please have the motion restated? I'm a little confused here.
Great, so we'll give it our best.
Sorry.
Motion was to direct staff to work with the chamber and others through a work session to come up with viable, viable options to beautify the city pertaining to Section E.
That's correct.
Close.
Close.
Okay. Then I have a point of clarification I'd like to pursue here, if I might. To be clear, the motion that's on the floor here would be to, when we're talking about adopting the title, so...
That's not on the, on the floor right now.
That's a separate motion after this.
I'm going to delete. I'll delete Section E.
Person at a time, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Help me out, what's the, what's our order procedure here? I'm a little confused here by this and I want to make sure...
Council President Parsons put up, up, an informal motion on the table with regard to staff direction.
Right.
Wasn't it, wasn't to pass a formal ordinance? Since that motion's already on the table, and you could certainly do it any way that you want. You're, you're the council, you get to do pretty much anything you want. I thought, just for sake of ease, since that motion was already on the table and seconded, you could go forward and adopt that as an informal direction. Up to you how, what the details are, as Councilor Freeman pointed out. When you're done with that, because of what Nate was stating, so we can move forward, we would then pass the ordinance minus subsection E.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Make sure I'm on the same page here.
That, that's important. It's good to know what we're voting on. Mr. Brown?
Well, just in preparation for a work session, you can rest assured that I will be working closely with the chamber and anybody else that wants to sit at the table with me to, to come up with a proposal that is palatable. Because I think we all have the same objective in mind. I think we want to raise the bar in this community for various issues, so.
Further discussion? Councilor Ryan?
Well, I think I have to wait until you.
This is discussion on the motion?
On the motion.
Not, this is not on the overall ordinance, this is on the, on the direction for Section E.
I'll wait.
All right. I just have one comment. One is, Mr. Brown, you already gave us a tremendous template of options in the spreadsheet you provided and I think that's a very good grounds for initiating conversation and bringing a lot of thought to the table. So, I appreciate the work that went into that very much. I also appreciate, and I made a note here before Mr. Rudehouse came up, but he actually made the statement, Kaiser Station set a new bar. When that was put together, that set a new level of the expectations of what Kaiser can be. And I think that is also a very powerful point of discussion for what this is going to look like going forward. It was groundbreaking in literal and figurative terms and I think that's going to be part of the conversation, so. I appreciated that point of view as well and I really appreciate Mr. Thompson talking about, "Yeah, let's sit down, figure this out, we've got a lot of smart brains in the room, a lot of experience, let's draw from them." And we always come up, we always do better when we work together. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
One, it passes a six one with the no being Councilor Ryan? Council President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council move, geez, I can't direct, geez, I move that the Kaiser City Council pass a bill for an ordinance amending Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 2.309 Site and Landscaping Design, amending ordinance ninety-eight dash three-eight-nine, omitting subsection E.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, the Kaiser City Council adopted Bill for an Ordinance 2017, amending Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 2.309 Site and Landscaping Design, amending ordinance ninety-eight dash three-eight-nine as amended by the removal of Section E. Is that clear?
And, Madam Mayor, for the record, I'll indicate that that's Section 2.309.03, Sub-E.
So noted.
So noted, yeah.
Discussion. Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, I have a couple of thoughts. First of all, I concur with Council Herrera in his statement earlier. I think there are multiple inequities in this, there's exclusions, there's sizes, there's multiple develop, types of development. There's Kaiser Station versus River Road, which is one of our challenges, that we're trying to make River Road, you know, more attractive to do business. And I, I hear the voices of River Road, I think that's really important that we recognize that. I agree with the landscape codes, I feel like we're already have that in place, but I also feel like, right now, we have private business versus government and I struggle with that. I think, I think we have the opportunity to be proactive, I think we have the opportunity to set a precedence and I realize that I have, you know, I've said this before, because obviously I was a no vote before, but I want to, I want to reiterate that we are not just not being business friendly, I think we're being anti-business. And I think that as we look into the future, I think we're really hurting ourselves and, and the opportunity to have people choose Kaiser to do business and to grow and to support our local businesses as we say that we want to and we're going to, because as was pointed out a few times, you know, the government's really kicking local business butt on all levels. And we just implemented our parks fee and our police fee for the, and we included our businesses in that, so there's multiple, the fees just go on and on. And I feel like this is another fee and it really adds up for some businesses, as we've seen. And I realize we're talking about options, but I think, in my opinion, that we have to help our local businesses, we have to attract local business and we have to support them once we ask them to come. And so, for that reason, I, you know, I definitely am a no on, on the fees, so I'm going to stay with my no, which is why I voted no. But I, I just feel like we're really missing the boat here as a, as a council with opportunities, so. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Further discussion? Councilor Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really appreciate the, the consideration that we're, we're making here by deleting that particular section. I am going to go back to Mr. Brown's memo to the council and I would disagree that this is not a fee, sorry. But when you're requiring somebody to do something, that you can call it a fee, you can call it a tax, it's a mandate and it's going to cost somebody something. And I think as Mr. Thompson pointed out, it's another hundred dollars or, in the case of the property being under consideration for development at Kaiser Station, that's seventy to eighty thousand dollars potentially. Or, you know, what, whatever else. My, my concern is, is that, or I should say, that is one of the concerns. So, I think it's an added cost to doing business and I, the thing I really do appreciate is the fact that we're going to talk about this some more. I've, feel like I've been pretty consistent on that point with respect to the cost for developing. The distinction I would make, though, between Kaiser Station and a business locating down on River Road is the fact that I think, thankfully, we had somebody who was willing to bring in an investment into this community. I don't think that a lot of businesses have that capability to do that. I don't think a lot of developers necessarily have that ability to do that. I don't know what the profit margin is on some businesses, but it's going to vastly differ from industry to industry. Someone who represented the food processing industry, there are a lot of presumptions made that, well, you know, it's a big company, it's making millions of dollars a year, except for the fact, if you step back for a moment and realize that it's this cost, it's that cost, it's that government regulation or it's whatever, and eventually that profit margin gets pretty skinny. And so, that's why you pay attention. That's why I had to pay attention to how much unemployment insurance taxes were going up or workers' comp rates were going up. And again, one percent may not sound like a lot, but that depends on what value you're ascribing to it. That was just the thing, I, you know, I, I really appreciate the, the work. I know Nate has put in a lot of work on this, I'm sure a lot of anguish about that as well. But that's, I really felt that that subsection in particular needed further discussion before we go down that road of requiring somebody to put in something. I think that the rest of the, the, the section is great. I think upgrading, requiring site improvements with respect to plantings and that sort of thing, I think that's a great idea. But when we start talking about bringing in something on a private property and it does say in that section that we are deleting that, quote, "The value of the permanent art easement and artwork shall be credited against this requirement." That's a permanent art easement and that's something that I think, when we're talking about private property, I think that needs to be thoroughly discussed. That was not, that's not even an issue we've even talked about yet. But I'm glad we're going to have that opportunity to talk about that and thanks for listening.
All right. Thank you very much. Further discussion? Councilor, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure all of the council understands, the current motion on the table takes out the requirement, deletes the requirement for the one percent amenities.
Right.
So, are we all clear on that? Okay.
So, what we're talking about here is just the, the code, the minimum requirements of landscaping as we would for any code, any building code.
Right.
Yeah.
So, it's everything else but that section and we've already passed a resolution or a motion to revisit that and have a broader discussion, so we are clear about what we want, where we want, how we want to do that and build that, that collaboratively. So, that piece is already being dealt with that way and so, this is the rest of it. So, that's was all, that's the one piece on the table now. So, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. That will take us, thank you, everybody, for your input. We know, we've got your contact information. Okay. Moving on then to item 8A, Resolution Authorization for Supplemental Budget ADA Transition Agreement with Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments, ADA meaning Americans with Disability Act. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood?
Madam Mayor, City Council, the city is currently in contract negotiations with the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. We're working on a project to have them help us, assist us with putting together an ADA transition plan. The ADA transition plan will identify the current areas that the city has some restrictions as far as people with disabilities and they'll, we'll put together a timeline to address those as well. It's anticipated that the transition plan will be done by December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. And that doesn't mean all the work will be done, just the plan of how we're going to address any identified needs. any identified needs. This is coming to you a little bit early. As I indicated, the contract is still in negotiations, although the cost is, is pretty well said at this point. Given the public notice requirements and the cost to publish in the newspapers, we decided to go ahead tonight with the request for the supplemental budget. In total, the project's anticipated to cost twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, of which thirteen thousand five hundred will be due during this current fiscal year. So the budget request is an additional thirteen thousand five hundred in the general fund to provide for this year's ADA transition plan costs. And with that, if you have any questions?
City Manager.
Also, just as a clarification, we currently follow the ADA in, in all respects, so all new projects, all new construction the city does, new parks, when we upgrade park amenities, we follow the ADA. The one piece we've never done is actually put together the written plan that says we do that. So we do it, we're just now sort of dotting the i's, crossing the t's, which is not unusual for cities. About ninety percent of all cities, a hundred percent of cities are required to have one, about ten percent have actually done the work, so, and something, something higher than that actually complies with the ADA but doesn't have the transition plan. We're in that group, so we're, we're working on it, and I'm excited to get this done and under our belt so that we can be in, we can be able to assure those with disabilities that we, we are watching out for their needs.
So a follow-up question, once this plan is in place, will that make us more competitive, possibly for grant funding for projects that need done, that we identify?
I don't know that it makes us more competitive necessarily, but it definitely makes certain that we qualify for more grants, because some grants require an ADA transition plan to, to be adopted.
That also shows that we've thought it through, we do the work, as you have said, but the depth to which we have thought it through. Counselor Freeman.
So with this plan, is it something that we do once in a lifetime? Is it once every five years? Is it once when we think, oh, we've, you know, our city's grown and we need to then look at another subdivision? How do, how do we as a city take this plan and then plan for the future and?
There are pieces of it that we will only do once. There are, so there are different, there are different sections to the Americans with Disabilities Act. One says you will do these things. The other one says you will go back and catalog every piece of, every asset that you own and make sure it complies with these things. That part is what the transition plan is about, that's the part that we will only do once, because once you've brought everything that you've built prior to the Americans with Disabilities Act being put into place, then you've satisfied that need. Now that being said, the requirements under the Americans with Disabilities Act continually change and are updated, and so when you build a, like a sidewalk ramp or whatnot, it's safe harbored under the ADA transit, the ADA as it exists at the time that you build that asset, and then if you rebuild it, and if the standard has changed in the future, then you comply and then under a new safe harbor. So there's a lot of that that we'll have to continue over time, just continually assessing, you know, what do we have, does it comply with the current standard versus the standard it was built under? But the transition plan will only have to be done once, because that identifies where we're simply out of compliance.
Thank you. Further questions? Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R. 2017 Authorization for Supplemental Budget ADA Transition Agreement with the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R. 2017 Authorization for Supplemental Budget ADA Transition Agreement with Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. That's all we have under administrative action, so let's go to the consent calendar. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item under the consent calendar tonight, and that's the approval of the September 5th, 2017 regular session minutes.
All right. Any reason to pull it for discussion? Council President Parsons.
I move that we pass the consent calendar, item A.
The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to council reports. I think last time I picked on Council Ryan, so I'm going to start with Council Anderson.
All righty, thank you. Just two things I will report to you on, that I was involved with, September 13th, that was kind of the, the busy day for me, was attending the Kaiser Chamber Board meeting as their liaison there. Just going through lots of, it's never too early to plan for Irish Festival, right? So that's, they continued to do that, there are a lot of details coming together on that. Also, just here, they're also planning, of course, their various different runs, the Turkey Run, gosh, whatever that's called, the Turkey Dash, thank you.
Turkey.
And the Jingle Dash. And, okay, so whatever has a dash, and maybe they're going to be responsible for, Holiday Lights Parade. We always put out the call for more volunteers, they need more volunteers to help with that, of course, to make sure that that gets pulled off successfully. But then also, you know, some of the other little things that they're involved with, like setting up the lights along River Road at Christmas time, that's always a really a special, nice little thing during the holiday season. And then the other thing was kind of at the end of the day, attending the Claggett Creek Watershed Council. Those folks are, we've got some real dedicated folks on that particular body, they really, really care about what they're, they're doing and the issues that they're very much involved with. So they, they continue to talk about some of the issues that, that they've been struggling with with respect to the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board over liability insurance, as well as boundary discussion, too. They've been wanting to, seeing that we, they've done a great job of expanding that Watershed Council boundary, but they want to do a little bit more on that, and they've run into some interesting little roadblocks as they did some history, or research, I should say. So Mark Callier is continuing to work and to rectify that with the various bodies involved so that they can bring, they would like to bring Kaiser Rapids Park and Clear Lake, that just kind of makes sense, since it's right, right here. Continuing their work on the story map of Claggett Creek Watershed, that's an absolutely fascinating project where they're employing drones, drones, I believe, and some other technology. And then the other, let's see, let's, oh, I think, let's see, I think there, if I'm correct here, there is an open house that they will be involved with over at Kaiser Fire District Public Works on October 9th. And then the final one is just to get on folks' calendar is they'll be out at Kaiser, at the Kaiser Rotary Arboretum Project, helping with that and getting things planting in the southeast corner of Kaiser Rapids Park. So there you go. Thank you.
What is the, that project? Do you, is there a plan for that yet?
Well, it's been on their calendar, it's, they're going, I believe they're going to be planting some trees. I think that may be part of the, this year's, I know a little bit about Rotary, but the Rotary International President Ian Reisley kind of put out a challenge to plant one tree for each Rotary in the world, and so I believe that's Kaiser Rotary's part of that project to create a, kind of an arboretum, if you will, and that would be in the southeast corner of Kaiser Rapids Park.
Very cool.
Yeah, that is cool. And then I think the only other item I think that I'm, I am missing was, I think, our breakfast sitting in, on the 14th. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but with the county commission.
Okay.
That's it.
It has been a full month.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Herrera.
Yes, I didn't quite have as much as Bruce did. We had the Parks Forum last week that we attended, along with you, Madam Mayor, and we also, I want to say something about Serv Fest, which they did here last Sunday. I, I came as an observer mostly, slash volunteer, sort of, but there was a lot of people here, and it was just an amazing event. If you've never gone to it, it's just amazing, and Tom Fox and Rachel, all those guys, it's got to be over a couple hundred volunteers, and they do a wonderful job, serve a lot of people, and it's just, it's so Kaiser, I mean, it's beautiful. I want to just give a kudos to those guys, and that's the Lake Point Community Church. Yeah, they do a wonderful job, they do it every year, and it's just fantastic. Also, we had a meeting today with the Career Technical Education Center, which we both attended, the board, advisory board, and that was very interesting. We, that place is really growing, and they're adding a lot, oh, we have to, we have to go visit again, they're constantly growing. The other thing I had was the points of interest, we didn't quite have a forum, but we did get two new members, and I thought I was pretty excited about that, I don't remember their names, but you wouldn't have the names on you, would you?
Carla.
And Lito. Crystal. I can't remember their names. Okay, Crystal and who?
And Lito.
Nice people, anyway, so we're, we're pretty excited about having them board. Also, Mary, Mary had a nice win at Forest Grove, and they'll be home this Friday, so come over and root for them, and of course, don't forget the open house Monday night over at the Parks Station Public Works, and that should be pretty exciting. Also, we have a leadership group from Whittaker that I'm going to be working with for a project at Kennedy Elementary. And I don't know the kids' names, but they're, they do a great job with their leadership program, and they're going to come over, and I'm going to kind of supervise and help them with a project at Kennedy Elementary. So we're having a lot of, a lot of good community service from a lot of young people, and it's awesome. Pretty much all I have. Oh, last thing I have is this, excuse me, I'm sorry, there's this huge event in the convention center in Salem, which is called Conexiones, which is from all Latino people, professionals from all over the state, and we're going to have some guest speakers, and that'll be Thursday morning, where all Latino elected officials in Oregon will be meeting there, and it's, we're having a national speaker, and I can't remember her name, it's hard to pronounce, Maria something, but it's, it's going to be really interesting, so there's going to be quite a show up there, so it's going to be fun. So thank you very much, that's all I got.
All right, that sounds great. Council President Parsons, welcome back.
Thank you. Yes, I've been gone a couple of weeks, so I didn't do anything, obviously, so, so next week we have coming up Planning Commission on, on Wednesday, and then the Commissioner's Breakfast on Thursday.
Actually.
Actually? Oh, we didn't have the planning report?
No. So because of all the other things that have been going on, we do not have Planning Commission, Planning Commission has been canceled.
Oh, I strike that from my report. Planning Commission has been canceled.
All right. Yeah, you got one evening back. Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. First of all, there is a parking forum at McNary on the 12th, which is next Thursday, I think, at 6:00 PM, and that's, that's going to be a conversation between school officials, city officials, neighbors, we, we've heard a lot about that issue in front of this body, and so anyway, that's going to be further discussed at McNary. So again, that is the 12th at 6:00 PM, so any interested parties are welcome to attend. Also, I attended the No Banquet, the Kaiser Network of Women, and that was a fantastic luau, and it was a lot of fun, and just a big thank you to those, that organization with how much they benefit the schools and benefit the community, a lot of, lot of individuals working really hard with that organization, and thank you to them for contributing to our community. Also, Dog Park the Musical is Kaiser Homegrown Theater's latest offering, and that is going to be at Schmeckere, it opens Friday, the 6th, and, this Friday, and runs for three weekends, and so we would love to see some, some great support for that organization, and it will be lots of fun.
I'm looking forward to that.
Me, too.
Just the title alone says I've got to go see it. Counselor Freeman.
That seems like a long time since I've been here, I guess, since I missed the last meeting as well. I just want to give a shout out from the Traffic Bike Ways Safety Pedestrian Committee. This committee's been really addressing some safety concerns just around town and on some ongoing things, and so this is just a shout out to Officer Wenning and both, and Mike Griffin, who are the staff support for this committee. They have been phenomenal at getting back to the committee with questions, concerns, so just great follow-up, and the committee thanked them at our last month's meeting, but I just wanted to share that with Chief, and Bill's not here, but I'm sure it'll be passed along, so just a nice big thank you for that. And then our meetings this week, or next week, actually, I think it's already next week, so Traffic meets on the 12th as well, at 6:00 PM, and West Kaiser at 7:00 PM here, and then we do still have volunteer openings, and the deadline to submit your application is Wednesday, November 8th. We have openings on the Budget Committee, Kaiser Points of Interest, Parks Advisory Board, the Traffic Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, the Stormwater Advisory Committee, and also then Youth Liaisons as well.
And Planning Commission.
And Planning, that, yeah, that one, well, that one, we probably have not advertised, so will that one be then for November?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so it may be, yes, so there is one on Planning as well, so, and again, so the deadline is close of business on Wednesday, November 8th. Thank you.
All right, and make sure everybody shares that on Facebook so more people can get their applications in. Thank you very much. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended my public arts meeting where we're working, continuing to work on the story polls, and there are community meetings set up for community input, and we have six of them, and they're in the evenings, and that is on ours, I believe, it's on our calendar for the city on the website, so please look at those. We've invited all of the schools, and with different dates for different ages, so that we can get the kids input, and again, that's just kind of telling the Kaiser story, history, and getting them put on the poll, so it's moving along fabulously.
And, and tomorrow is the first one, right?
Is it tomorrow night?
It is.
Yeah.
Great.
Time flies.
And then also, I attended with Madam Mayor, three days of the League of Oregon Cities trainings and ongoing education, which was enlightening and educating and a little tiring, honestly, it was a lot of work mentally, I worked very hard. But I think, I think we've got some good information to bring back to the community to implement, so I'm excited for that. And then I wanted to share that I attended the BUNCO for Breast Cancer that was here at the Civic Center, and they've come before us, so just a reminder, they've come before us as a nonprofit to use the center, if you remember, and it was a wonderful event. I can't, I can't, I could go on and on about it, but not only did they raise a lot of money, and it was a lot of fun, I want to, I also want to shout out to the Kaiser Rotary, a huge thank you, because they donated the room for the event so that they could make that profit margin, and that's really huge for the, the Rotary to do that for, for them, so thank you very much. I also attended the Parks Board meeting, where we're getting more information for the community and how to, how to move forward with our parks. And just a reminder, you heard that there's the, the Kaiser Fire Open House, but there's also an upcoming corporate coffee, and I'd like to invite everyone, it's being held at the Casa here on River Road, and it's, we'll share more about Casa, it's Tuesday, the 19th, at 7:30 AM, if you can put it on your calendar, and it's, again, just to support the, the kids in the community, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Youth Counselor Hernandez.
Thank you. Recently, our student body had voted for Homecoming Court, princesses and princes in each grade level, so we had the coronation assembly today, which is very interesting. They will be presented during the halftime football, homecoming football game this Friday against McMinnville, that's exciting. I also wanted to speak about a program that I'm involved in at McNary High School, it's called FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America. That is a student business organization that we have at McNary, it's a, it's a national program, and we have a chapter at our high school. Our mission statement is to bring business and education together through innovative leadership, and we do that through service and education and progress, our main three pillars. We, we push career development, character development, resume building, and career exploration, exploration for our students. It's a great opportunity for our students who are interested to start getting, looking towards their future now. It's very exciting. We have been growing almost exponentially, just two years ago, at our state conference, we took about 10 people, it was fun, but just last year we took we took about 10 people, it was fun, but just last year, we took about 60 people, and this year, we have a projected 120 members. So it's very exciting how much we're growing, and how many students are interested in business, especially at the high school level, so thank you.
And I also understand that Oregon FBLA students in general did extremely well in the national competition this last summer, and I imagine there were some, I hope there were some McNary students among them, but I know the Oregon team surprised the cookies out of some larger states.
Yeah, and we had at least a Oregon student run for national president, so that was exciting.
Sam being one of them.
Excellent. Well, very good, and way to put yourself, you know, forward out there and look for new opportunities to serve. So thank you for letting us know about FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, and if businesses want to get involved, who was the advisor that they should reach out to?
Mr. Brad Lomax at McNary High School.
Mr. Lomax, okay. So we can also share that out and encourage businesses, business leaders, to work with FBLA and help our next generation of business entrepreneurs.
I have one more thing. The FAFSA, the free application for federal student aid opened yesterday, October 1st. I completed it, it went pretty smooth, took about 30 minutes with me and my dad, you just need a couple tax forms. And if you are a student who does not have a social security number or 2016 tax forms, there are other options, alternatives available for you, and you can explore that at the College and Career Center, so please do apply to that.
Excellent advice. Get that FAFSA in. That's right. Very good. Just a couple things to add to the great work that's happening in our city. On the 21st, I went to the burial of the eclipse time capsule. Can you believe it's been over a month since that fabulous eclipse? So it was on the 21st, and we put a number of items in there, newspaper clippings, the Kaiser Times was in there. What I put in from the city was the T-shirt from Kaiser Rapids, along with our city pin, and so that's all part of the time capsule. The next eclipse, total eclipse that happens here is like in 21-something, and we figured that would be a little bit long. You would be here, all right, we'll have you remind them. So it's going to be dug up initially in 50 years, and good luck to them figuring out some of the stuff. I'm not sure they'll be able to open the flash drive with the pictures, but instructions will be included. It's a beautiful marble plate that's on top, you'll be able to see it, El Volcano Stadium. More importantly, what's inside represents the great experience we all had, the way our community came together to welcome the world and show the world that we're a wonderful place, and we get eclipsed by no one. Okay, that's the best I got. The next day, I was the speaker at the Collective Impact Workshop at the Crox Center that was hosted by the Catholic Community Services. It was specifically addressing issues on, well, first of all, the concept of collective impact, which is something that we do here. It was a very good learning on kind of the structure and the thinking behind a collective impact, and then I talked through what we're doing with the Homeless Initiative and how that very much embodies the concepts and the practices of collective impact in a very complex issue, a very difficult one, that does not have a one-size-fits-anybody solution, but that requires that we address it because it involves the life and the health of members of our community. So I was very honored to be asked to speak to that group about the work that is moving On the 26th, I attended SCATS, the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study, and there was a public comment period for the Public Participation Plan. So we're asking the public to weigh in on how we interact with the public. I know that sounds repetitive, but it is required by Federal Highway that that plan be continually updated, so that information that affects how we get around, that's important, gets out to everybody and hears all the voices in our community. So please go to the Council of Governments' website, and you can click on the study and also give your input there. On the 27th, just prior to the start of the League of Oregon Cities Conference, I went to the board meeting, where, among other things, there are two finalists now for the new executive director. They will both be visiting here in mid-October, we'll have a chance to visit with them, do final interviews, and a selection will be made. The city did receive, and Councilor Ryan was there with me, a presentation from the City County Insurance, and this is not for the Councilor or myself, this is for the employees of the City of Kaiser. The League of Oregon Cities and CIS proudly present the Silver Safety Award to the City of Kaiser, injury frequency rate of 0.9 in fiscal year 1617, with 101 full-time employees. So this is for the employees, sir.
Thank you.
And we know from sitting through the presentations at Personal Policy that safety is taken very seriously, safety protocols, and they're always looking for ways to continue to make improvements, because you are important to us. So I'm glad you guys, we're honored with the work. Also honored at the League of Oregon Cities with the Mark O. Hatfield Award for Excellence in Public Service was none other than the former mayor of Pendleton, Oregon, Mr. Phil Hauck. The award was presented by Governor Brown and by Senator Betsy Johnson, and with a standing ovation by all present. Anybody who has had the opportunity to work with Mayor Hauck knows what a giving and wise man he is. He will talk about just about any issue knowledgeably, and then give you a chance to sit and reflect and give you great guidance on how to approach problems and how to reach incredible solutions. He is a great state servant, and it was an honor to honor him, and truly surprised the cookies out of him, so he really did not see it coming. This morning, this, today, with the CTEC Career Technical Education Advisory Board, just briefly, the programs they have there are, coming up is auto body repair and painting, currently they have cosmetology, drone technology and robotics, residential construction, manufacturing, welding and engineering, video game, video and game design animation, and then coming up soon is business development and leadership, law enforcement, culinary arts, and agri-science. And that's just at CTEC. They also have, I think, now 30 different career technical education programs at the six major high schools, and Barbara Roberts now has two career technical programs, business entrepreneurship, education and teaching. So I love how this is continuing to grow and present opportunities for all of our students to be prepared for careers past high school. Well, done. The only thing coming up the rest of the week, we talked about the open house Monday night starting at 6:30. I've got the Council of Governments Executive Board, I have the SEDCor, which is Strategic Economic Development Board of Directors. Man, I'm getting tired, I guess. Mid-Valley Valley Area Commission on Transportation, I will not be attending, but will be listening in to AMPAC, which is the Oregon Municipal Planning Organizations Consortium, that's Friday. And then on Saturday, anybody who would like to join me out at the Habitat Build Site over, just off of Windsor Island Road, I'll be out there between 1:00 and 5:00, just to put in a couple, a few hours of work and meet the folks who are working on one of those two houses out there. That's going to complete the little development on that street, and several years ago, the first house, also had a council build day, and I remember Councilors Walsh and Callier helping build the fence that went all along the back there. So this is going to complete that project, and they will be looking forward then to more houses being built in Kaiser for families. So anybody who wants to come out then, or just arrange with Habitat to be involved in constructing these wonderful homes for families. Heritage Board will meet next Tuesday night, Kaiser Heritage Foundation, and then on the 14th, this is a very important event for so many families in our community, the Out of Darkness Walk for Suicide Prevention. I don't think there's a person in our community who hasn't been impacted by suicide among family or friends, and this is such an important opportunity to learn more, to support one another, and to make sure that we, as a community, help reach out to anybody who's in crisis and prevent one of the worst things that can happen in a person's life and a family's life. So that's the 14th, I believe it's down at Riverfront Park, so be there. That's all I got. So I'll turn it over to you, City Manager. With other business, this time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members or staff an opportunity to bring newer old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy.
Nothing tonight.
Tim?
Just a reminder again, for residents of Kaiser, your sewer can be about 2/3 of your bimonthly combined city services bill. We don't have a way to measure your sewer consumption, so we base your sewer rates off of your winter average of your water consumption. So the reminder is, right now, please conserve as much water as you possibly can, if you'd like to see your sewer bill reduced. Thank you.
A couple of things, some follow-up regarding the quarry and the shooting across the river. We've been in continual contact with the landowner. He has severely restricted who may shoot on that property. We've developed, and the PD has paid for, a sign that will put at one of the shooting spots, in fact, it's the, it's the only one that rounds come this direction, and that sign essentially prohibits, to the degree that it can be prohibited because it's voluntary compliance, essentially prohibits, alerts people that rifled rounds can head into Kaiser from that point. Couple of the residents from West Kaiser are going to help us install that later this And also, the landowner wanted us, wanted me to advise you all and the people listening that there are other landowners there, and shooting goes on in those locations as well. However, if you do hear something happening, give the PD a call, we'll get ahold of this landowner and see what we can do about suppressing that in the future. It's come to our attention that there's at least one self-described superhero in Kaiser. You all may have seen that as well. This guy goes by Rak Knight, and there's another character up in Canby named, who was previously in Beaverton, goes by Guardian Shield. We've contacted them both, and they appear to be earnest citizens, concerned, decent people, and no one has any reason to be alarmed, but we understand if you are. Thank you.
That's funny. Nate?
Alarmed or humored. So I've, just the one thing to share is that we are establishing, the date has not been set, but the kickoff team is going to be meeting next week for the Education Outreach Grant, and so that process is going to, we're going to start scheduling and start establishing stakeholders, and so that process will begin next week. And again, this is the Education Outreach Transportation Growth Management Grant that we received. This is the smaller of the two grants. This will be strictly an education opportunity to gather and share specific information regarding growth and how it affects communities. That starts next week.
City Attorney Johnson?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
There's a question, what is the progress on the big toy pad?
Well, the one person who could answer that definitively is gone. However, based on reports from last week, the contractor who is pouring the, the pour-in-place surface is onsite, and that pour has begun. So it's going to go in and be trowelled in in several lifts, and so I'm not sure where they are in the number of lifts that they have applied so far, but it is, it is being put in.
Wonderful.
As we speak. Well, not as we speak, because we're late, but we'll begin tomorrow.
No night work.
No night work.
Great. Thank you very much. I know the kids are probably chomping at the bit to get back out there, as are their parents. Councilor Anderson.
I don't know who to direct this question to, whether it would be for the person who's not here or the person who is here. But, you know, quite some time ago, it appeared that there was some graffiti put up on one of our speed limit signs near Figaro's Pizza, and, you know, I can tell you, you can, it is hard to see those numbers at nighttime. When I'm driving past there at about 11:30 in the morning to take my daughter to school, you can definitely pick that paint up. I'm just wondering if it's been identified as any particular type of graffiti, and if there's a plan to change that.
Well, it's actually for the person who is not here, because it's the public signs, they maintain all of those signs. However, as chance would happen, I happened to drive past today as members of the Public Works team were out there scrubbing those signs, and they are now clean.
Okay. Yeah, I, just because of past life and having some experience with kind of gang enforcement issues, when I saw that go up initially, I was greatly concerned about that, and so I was hoping there wasn't any sort of an element moseying its way into Kaiser, so, thanks.
Well, it's after McMinnville, Jill, and all that. Thank you, I appreciate the follow-up. I don't have any written communications this evening, so agenda input is next Monday night, we will not be having a work session. Everybody is invited to join the Kaiser Fire District and the City of Kaiser Public Works down at their facilities for a joint open house that opens at 6:30. So come on down, it's going to be great stuff for the whole family. Then we will meet on October 16th at 7:00 in regular session, and then on November 6th at 7:00 in regular session. October has five Mondays, so there'll be a bit of a gap in between those two meetings. So is there anything else for the good of the order? It is 9:07, and we are adjourned.